The agenda, so good enough for anyone who wishes to be acknowledged, Dr. Powers.
Yep.
Chuck Powers, TNEC, there is on your agenda tonight, as you'll find in the back of the document I just gave you, a agenda, a discussion of the status of preliminary investigation to determine whether blocks 6,003, blocks 1 and 2 should be designated non-contamination areas in need of redevelopment. And my concern is that when this process was done back beginning in November of 1918 to list several such properties, it was discussed actively by the council before being sent to you folks. And when this was actually done by the council at its recent meeting, the day there was no discussion of this resolution whatsoever. And my understanding is, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, there was never any consideration of this resolution by this planning board. But in fact, if you take a look at the law I dispatched out to you, after the council asked that you do this, you folks must then figure out a process at which you are going to actually put the resolution in play, you can decide whether to or not. And at that point, you can ask your, and commission your planner, whoever that may be, to prepare a document. So I don't understand why that step is missing in this process. And I'd like to have that understood, if possible, through your attorney. And I do not understand therefore why this document, which is actually listed as final on the agenda, has actually already been produced when you didn't ask for it. And that is my concern tonight. The process for designating areas in need of redevelopment is a very prescribed process, as you'll see with the law that I have out to you tonight. And I don't believe this can come before you, or whatever it is you're going to do tonight. For example, have you actually noticed that people are within 200 feet of this? Where are you in this process? How did you get this document? How did Mr. Price know he was supposed to do it? How is he going to be funded by it? I don't understand anything about that process, and I hope you can explain it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We will try to address those questions when we get out to you. So this isn't the discussion on the status of a preliminary investigation to determine whether blocks 6,003, blocks 1 and 2 should be designated non-contamination areas in need of redevelopment. Mr. Price is the township planner, the board's planner. And before we proceed with the actual agenda item, I'd like Dr. Powers to raise a couple of questions. Regarding missing steps and procedure and notice and so on and so forth. If you could possibly address those, we would be grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not a formal hearing, so I don't need to be sworn. But I did want to bring the board up to speed in terms of where...
Just let's sort it in anyway.
Okay.
For business. Do you sort of test them to give us the whole truth, the truth about you?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So where the process lies is that our firm prepared an area, a preliminary investigation of an area in need of redevelopment for two properties collectively known as 329 Alfred Avenue. That report was forwarded to the board, it's been made available to the public, it's been posted on the website. Notice has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law for a hearing, a formal hearing, where the board would either recommend or not recommend the designation to the council.
This is not that formal hearing.
This is not a formal hearing. The formal hearing will take place on June 27th. But I know that Dr. Powers has indicated that, in his opinion, legal procedure has not been followed. And I wanted to provide the board and with members of the public who may have an interest that with respect to the legal requirements for proceeding with this determination of an area in need of redevelopment investigation and the recommendation of this planning board, and also as it turns out, the actions of the council relating to this investigation, that in my opinion, and under my guidance, advice from council, both at the legal council, both at the township council level, and with Mr. Hyrum, that we are 100% in compliance with the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law. And I do understand that to some people it may be a little bit confusing because the process that is being followed in this particular situation is slightly different than what was followed when we did that investigation for the two DPW properties. So if you would just indulge me, I'd like to place on the record exactly what we're doing here, why it's in compliance with the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law, and why in this particular situation, a couple of those steps are not being undertaken. So the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 4012A, sets forth the power of both the council, the municipal governing body, and the planning board. And so in section 12A4, it says, states as follows. "The municipal governing body shall have the power to cause a preliminary investigation to be made pursuant to 12A-6 within areas in need of redevelopment." So that's the first thing. So it is the governing body that authorizes the study, the preliminary investigation. And as I will get to it, in this situation, they did that. They informed my office to go ahead and do the study. They adopted a resolution on 9/7, and we involved in that study. And let me just state this, is I'm the planning consultant to the township, to the zoning board, the planning board, and to the governing body. And I do all work that's related to, I do master plans, I write the zonings, we do redevelopment, we do reviews of applications, we consult with various neighborhood groups. And because I'm the planning consultant, it's not necessary, and this is not an unusual practice, it doesn't only happen in TNEC, but it happens in all other municipalities, that as the planning consultant, there are a variety of officials or members of the board who can pull me up and tell me to go ahead and do the study without first getting authorization or a resolution from the planning and zoning board. So for example, I forget a poll or a letter from Ross saying, "Do you think that the planning board should review this for the planning board?" So I'll have that discussion with her. Sometimes I hear from Mr. Hyrum, sometimes I hear from Bill Rock or John Shedanian, sometimes I hear from the administrator, from Dean Kozinski. Sometimes the mayor or members of the council will call me up and indicate the same. So it was not unusual in this particular situation that when the council decided to go ahead with the study, and they went through the process of adopting a resolution, that my office was informed, "Go ahead and do the study," and that was the basis for it. We did not sign a separate contract, we did not feel the need to adopt a resolution authorizing, saying, but the governing body did adopt a resolution which basically said to the planning board, "Conduct the investigation," and then asked me to do that study on behalf of the planning board. Also, in the same... Technical question for clarification. So what you're saying is, is that the statute as provided to us by the public says that the determination of redevelopment can only happen if the governing body authorizes us to investigate. And normally, they would authorize us, and we would authorize you, since they can also authorize you. We just shortcutted that, and now we're at the point of you were authorized to do it officially, and now you're coming back to us to report, which is the next stage in the process anyway.
No, no, no. He's going to come back and do the report, because the report's been done.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But the only statement that quote-unquote "could have gotten missed" was the official coming back to this meeting for us to say, "Oh, by the way, as an agenda item, go do that, since they can authorize it and we can authorize it." But all the public hearings, all the public comments, all the due process and stuff is the same.
And notices have been filed correctly, and just to get, let's jump forward a bit. But the notices will be done and have been done correctly, and they will be noticed for the next meeting.
That's why, I just want to, again... I'm getting to that. Essentially, you're correct, but let me just clarify and put it on the record.
One second, one second, Mr. Rose. Yes, thank you. I think I'm misconstruing something, because I'm under the presumption from what you're saying and from what Dr. Powers is saying, he's thinking that we're doing something that's a breach, that could be, I guess, potential liability at a future date, and you're indicating to us, I think, that this is not a formal situation, it's an informal situation. And as a consequence, we don't have to have compliance for certain things, we don't have to have notification for certain things, because it's not a formal meeting.
Right. If I can get through my explanation, I think you'll understand. It's not that it's... There are certain requirements, certain parts of the law that have to be followed, and in my opinion, they've been followed here. So let me just indicate, so I've indicated what the governing body did and how our firm was authorized to do the studies. So now let me talk about what the planning board is authorized to do. So in the same section, 12A4B, the local redevelopment and housing law, says the following. "A municipal planning board shall have the power to, one, conduct when authorized by a municipal governing body, a preliminary investigation and hearing to determine whether an area is in need of redevelopment." So in that particular situation, the governing body says, "You, as the planning board, will conduct a study and have a hearing and make a recommendation." Okay, so in this situation, as is the case when we do rezonings or amendments to a master plan or other studies, is I'm told to do the work, authorized to do the work on behalf of the planning board. I don't come to a planning board meeting and wait for the planning board to say, "Go ahead and do the master plan reexamination." The planning board is well aware of that situation. The governing body has authorized me to do that. I go ahead and do the study. The legal requirement is that the planning board does not have to hold a hearing, they do not have to pass a resolution. What they are required is, when the study is done and presented to them, it has to be formally noticed, has to be had a hearing, and they have to vote. And they have to say, "Yes, we recommend," or "We don't recommend." So essentially, in this particular situation, we have followed the requirements of the, both the governing body and the planning board, and our firm have followed the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law. And the appropriate time at which the study will be presented will be on June 27th. And obviously, it'll be open to the public. And the notice that has been provided, the local redevelopment and housing law indicates that those properties which are subject to the potential determination, those are the ones that have to receive notice. There is no requirement, although it can be done, but there's no legal requirement that anybody within a 200-foot radius of that property will also be noticed. So the notice has been proper, the study has been prepared. We're going to go ahead with the hearing on June 27th. And so in my opinion, the local redevelopment and housing law has been followed.
Questions?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Why is it that notice 200 to 200, within the radius of the property is not required? I don't quite understand.
That's because the local redevelopment and housing law does not require. There are applications, for example, with a site plan application, or whether it's a rezoning, or whether it's a variance, it's very specific that, you know, the municipal land use law says notice has to be provided to properties within 200 feet. In this particular situation, it only indicates that it's parties of interest. And there's case law that basically says parties of interest are those properties who are included in the study area. It is not necessary, and I know in some situations, municipalities feel it ought to go to the extra step, or wants to include neighbors within 200 foot, but that is not a legal requirement.
So the only notice required for this particular report would be two properties?
It would be, in terms of specific property owners, it's general notice, and then the two specific property owners. So I mean, this hearing, notice has been provided.
So it's two printed notices, and it's, one is 17 days before the hearing, at least 17 days before the hearing, at least 10 days before the hearing. I would be looking further back to recover, make sure we recover. The notices were printed last Friday, and they're being printed this Friday, I believe. I'll check. And then the notices have gone out with two property owners, which is compliant with the law.
Okay, I know it's in compliance with the law, but do we really feel that's prudent, given the fact that this property affects residential homes within 200 feet? Is it truly prudent for us not to serve notice? Is it wise to not serve notice?
It's not required. And our laws are very particular about this. So when the law tells me that I have to provide notice, it says, and will say to applicants, "Here's this X type of application, you need a 200-foot list." Because without telling me that, then you're telling me who's in earnest. 200 feet's not that big. So when you say in earnest, "Party," I'm supposed to use my judgment and use a 200-foot list? 500-foot list? 1,000 feet, two blocks? That's why the law tells me what to do, and me trying to interpret or giving some sort of, that's the problem. And that's why we do a general one, and it goes into paper twice, not just once.
And I've had situations where that can become confusing. Sometimes you don't get the proper list, some people say they have, but they haven't been noticed, and then you get into an argument. The cleanest way, in my opinion, to follow is to provide general notice. You know, we put it on the website, people are aware of it. It is basically to follow the letter of the law. So in my opinion, and I've had consultation with Mr. Hyrum, we decided that only the two property owners could get notice in this situation.
Mr. Zalman?
That's a good question.
We're just being asked, essentially, whenever that happens, to agree that these are areas in need of redevelopment. Once there is a redevelopment plan, a site plan, and anything else, that will require those 200-foot radius.
That's exactly right.
So we're just saying that someone's going to say, "These problems need to be..." Once they're redeveloped, then you're right, then it comes back to the...
We're not definitively saying that's going to put a 20-story building, one of these properties, on the 24. All we're saying is that, listen, we should look at it, as into it as an area.
So I guess, you know, one of the reasons for, and it's understandable that there may be some confusion, is why wasn't the same procedure followed as we did with regard to the designation of the DPW? And I think there's two reasons. One is because, and I'll get into this in a little bit more detail, is, one is that the whole redevelopment process was new to TNEC. Now, having gone through it once, there's great familiarity. And the second reason is the familiarity of the board with the properties that are the subject of this study. So with regard to, the two differences with regard to how we're proceeding with it this time versus how we proceeded with the DPW, is that, number one, the planning board adopted a resolution and said, "Yes, we authorize, you know, Mr. Price to do the study." That was done. And the second thing is, we had an informal discussion. I didn't plan to be here tonight, but in light of these questions that were raised, that's why it's on tonight's agenda. But let me just say this, is when we did the DPW, this was the first time that the redevelopment process under the local redevelopment and housing law was brought before members of the planning board and of all the members of the council. The last time that redevelopment was done in TNEC, to my knowledge, it's not been done in my tenure, was with the Glen Point Redevelopment. So that was the late 1970s and 1980s. So I felt that as a matter of basically letting the planning board know what's coming, letting members of the public know what's coming, letting them understand the process to be able to answer, ask questions, rather than just to get the study, was to basically appear in a meeting and for the planning board to understand what the jurisdiction was and to engage in that discussion. And as you remember, we had this meeting over at the RADA Center. I was there that evening, and I did a little presentation, asked to the process, the legal criteria, the planning board roles, and in particular, opportunities that the public would have for input. So now that the planning board has been through it, they're familiar with the process, and upon advice of council, a meeting and resolution and explanation was not deemed in this situation to be necessary or required. And the second reason is the familiarity of the planning board with the properties and the master plan and land use policies of the study area. So you go back to the two DPW properties. The planning board did adopt a master plan reexamination, and then they took a consistency review of the rezoning of 1425 TNEC Road, because it was, so, you know, in that situation, they were familiar with that property. However, 1600 River Road, which is the main DPW area, had not been the subject of a rezoning or possible redevelopment, at least not before the planning board, for going back several years. So this was another reason why, in addition to having a meeting to discuss the resolution, why an informal discussion was held at the planning board meeting prior to the formal hearing, was basically to bring the planning board up to speed about the prior master plan and zoning history of 1600 River Road, which is a part of the area in need of redevelopment study. In this particular case, the planning board is very familiar with 329 Alfred Avenue, the Alfred and the Alfred Avenue area in general. Our firm was engaged in a year-long study of this particular area. It was studied in detail. It was then the subject of a master plan amendment or reexamination, followed by the adoption of the overlay zoning. This did not happen, this happened about three years ago. So integral to that master plan and that reexamination, know that the policy of your point is to encourage the redevelopment of those properties at some point, from industrial and warehouse development into a higher-density multi-family residential community, perhaps inclusive of a hotel and accessory retail facilities. So at the time, at that particular time, back in 2015, the question sort of came up, it is, "Well, why didn't you use redevelopment in that situation?" Well, we did consider it, but it was not used because we thought that some of the properties either did or might not qualify under the local redevelopment and housing law. We felt that some, you know, would, but not all or most of the properties would be so designated. And also, there was a meeting held with the property owners, and it was pretty clear to the township that while they were not opposed to an overlay zoning, in other words, they would have the opportunity to do residential development, they were definitely seen to pose to the adoption of a redevelopment plan which foresaw the redevelopment of their properties into residential development. So fast forward to this particular point in time, the same holds true in regard to all of Alfred Avenue. However, the owner of 329 Alfred Avenue has signaled a willingness to work with the township on such a designation on a redevelopment plan, and in working together on a more detailed investigation of the property, which we undertook as part of our area in need of redevelopment, we were permitted access to the interior conditions. And as you'll see, I don't want to, I'm not giving away any surprises or anything, and I'll certainly put it on the record at the June 27th meeting. But based on our analysis of those conditions, we believe that it does qualify. So the point is that the planning board is well familiar with the property and has recently endorsed and encouraged its redevelopment for multifamily residential development, or master plan, or hotel through a master plan and overlay zoning. And so again, it was deemed unnecessary to bring the planning board up to speed in terms of what the status, you know, was, that we didn't really need an informal meeting to discuss it. So the idea in this particular situation, again, upon advice of council, was that once the governing body had adopted the resolution, directed the planning board to do it, had indicated to us to do the study, that it wasn't necessary for the planning board to adopt the resolution, it wasn't necessary to hold an informal discussion, that our firm could do that work, provide the study to the planning board, giving the planning board, as per the local redevelopment and housing law, the ability to hear and discuss, consider, and recommend the designation. And because of its familiarity with the redevelopment process and with these particular properties, we could proceed in that fashion, without delaying the process and incurring additional time and additional steps and additional costs like we did with regard to the two DPW properties. So long story short, we complied with the law, we had good reasons to do it. There will be a full discussion on June 27th, and that's my presentation.
Right, so you're not making any presentation tonight?
That's correct.
Right, okay. So really, just we're doing, we're just acknowledging, I guess, the receipt of this report?
We're responding to, Dr. Powers sent a letter to...
I see.
To the secretary. There is an Oprah request, I believe, I haven't seen it myself, appeared tonight, and I felt it necessary in case there was some misconception, misunderstanding, or some sense that TNEC, and in particular the planning board, was circumventing somehow, you know, the law or the inability of members of the public.
Maybe Dr. Powers will notice the people within the 1,000 feet.
I will definitely do so.
Yeah, so, see?
Okay.
Any questions?
Two other things. Number one is, why do I, as a property owner, why do I want my property, or why wouldn't I want my property designated as an area of redevelopment? What's the advantage to a property owner that that happens?
What's the advantage or disadvantage?
Yeah.
Well, you know, as I explained in the prior hearing, under the redevelopment statute, there's a series of things that you're able to do that you can't do either by a variance or rezoning.
And the second question is, would it satisfy everybody in the room and out of the room, if somebody at this table now would make a motion to authorize Mr. Price to do this redevelopment exercise, since it's not coming up for another two weeks anyway? Then they've authorized us, we've authorized them, and he gets his marching orders and goes at it, there's no question.
It's not legally required?
And I've done the study.
And the study's done.
No, but the study isn't officially handed into the... I know there's no need for it, I'm just...
I think we can acknowledge that, acknowledge, I'm sorry?
I just had a question. Okay. June 27th meeting is for what purpose?
It's basically for the planning board to consider whether to recommend that the two properties in question should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment.
Or accept your resignation that one of them should not be?
Well, if you read the study, well, we're getting ahead of the summer. Is, the study finds that one of the properties doesn't strictly meet...
Okay, sorry. We have no reason for that.
I'll explain it at the meeting.
Okay, so the actual report...
We don't have it yet.
Is going to be a ready win?
It is ready. It's been given to TNEC, it's Rosland has copies. It's, you know, and it's posted on the website.
And when they'll end it, they'll publish it?
So if you don't...
Yeah, I have.
You're right.
Actually, it's interesting, I actually printed the report.
Yeah, Mr. Rose? Thank you. I'm so pleased when you're done.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little fuzzy on a couple of things, but I'll...
That'll be for the hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you.
A couple of things. I thank Mr. Powers for the desire, I assume, that we take the right steps on the correct path. path. And I'm also very appreciative that you're telling us, we're taking the right steps on the correct path. But I do have a question in terms of time, cost, and task efficiency regarding doing the process this way. Let me give some arbitrary figures. Let's assume a preliminary report cost us $500, and that a real report, and I don't mean to, this is not a real one, but one that's going through all, through all the formalities and the notice, and we're going towards an ordinance, we're going towards a this, we're going towards a that, that might cost us $900. But if we do this for $500, and then we have to go and do the other process to make it more formalized, that might cost us a total more than it would be if we just started from the day one, to do it through the more formalized process, and, and, and get from point A to point B a little bit more directly.
Mr. Rose, you can't do that. I understand what you're saying. You, if he is going to discuss a report, that report is going to have to be fully discussed as if it's the final report. So we'd have to notice and do everything anyway. So he's, when you, when we ask the planner to do a report, there's been discussions at, at the council level, and they want to know if these properties should ever be done. But it's not like he can come up and say, "Well, I kind of looked at it, what do you guys kind of think?" There's no kind of here. Are they doing the report, grabbing the vote, or, or not?
I thought the only difference was, it's a $500 report or a $900 report, the only difference is whether it gets done on June 30th or July 15th. Because otherwise, he'd have to wait for us to get together to vote him to do it. That's the only change I thought was made.
Exactly, and it's not like we can save money by doing it half.
It's the same report.
It's the same report. The two steps are, you didn't have to wait to, you know, to have this meeting to authorize me to do the study.
Right, that was...
Then I do the study, you know, it'll be August when we have the hearing. And the second was not, we didn't think that it was necessary to have the informal discussion as we did have in the DPW, because of the two factors. One is the board is familiar with the, the process, they understand what's involved.
They just voted on the...
And number two is Alfred Avenue is not a mystery to the board. The board spent a year studying it and, and, you know, and made its recommendations.
We thought it was not waiting for the...
We said, you know, "Let's go ahead and, and do the study and bring it to the board." It's, it's the same study that we would have done, whether you had those two steps or not. A public hearing will be the same, the criteria are the same, the full law is being followed. It's just those two steps which were followed in the DPW are not being followed here, but despite that, we still comply with the requirements.
Especially because I guess, we, we often cancel meetings.
That, that was another concern, and mostly for the public too. It's always, kids are going, people are going on vacation, people are taking those weeks off, so we want to have a time that's either, that was closer to when the kids are still in school, especially in my case. One of the reasons why the June 24th meeting was so good, is that there's still people in town.
So if there are no further questions from the board, I'd like to thank Mr. Price for his presentation, his comments, and responding to some concerns from the public, and we'll see you on the 27th.
Thank you very much.
8 p.m.
You guys said 24, 8 p.m.
27. Thursday, 2/27, 8 p.m. Good afternoon.